Meeting of the City Council, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Sanchez just entered the chambers.
Go to our general item, which is adoption of a resolution ratifying a proclamation of a local emergency.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, staff will be providing a presentation for you with the recommendation to adopt the resolution, but an overview of the rain event on Friday and damages to public infrastructure as a result. And so Deputy Chief Pete Lawrence will go first, followed by Carrie Dale and then Kyle Coger. And we will all be available for questions after the presentation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Pete Lawrence, Division Chief with the Fire Department. And I've been asked to give some context and some information relating to the storm that occurred this last Friday. So we had a week's worth of rain, but the important part is, is that on Friday, we set a single day rainfall record for Oceanside. Obviously, it's the harbor, it's not further inland. But we had a 3.18 inch day, 24-hour day, starting at midnight. And those records there go back until 1909. So the most rain we've had in a single day in any month throughout the last 111 years. So our biggest problem as well was the rainfall rate. We didn't just have one day of rain, but we had a whole week's worth of rain. And we had very high 12-hour rates. So we had 12, two inches of rain throughout the city through the course of the day. And it was falling on the backs of a lot of rain that had occurred over the week, leading to saturated soils. So the runoff that occurred on Friday was pretty astronomical for all of the flooding that we've had here in the city. Our calls for service, both police and fire, went up 50%. There was a large quantity of people that were, and we are lucky that it wasn't a normal Friday where people were out driving because our traffic accidents were not a huge component. But lots of calls for service ranging from fires to flooding calls to water rescues to trees into buildings. We had a lot of tree failures again, or trees that fell over because of the saturated soils that we were encountering. The San Luis Rey River has been trending very low, minimal water flow. It increased in flow over 1,000% in one day. We went from a seven-foot height to a 16-foot height. And to put that kind of in context, is the flow, and people talk about cubic feet per second, most people don't. You know, it's seven gallons, I think, per cubic foot. It went from 224,000 gallons per minute to 2.5 million gallons per minute at its peak. And so it peaked at a little over 16 feet on Friday. It went up immediately, it was not a gradual, it was a very rapid rise. So it gives you an indication of the amount of rain that fell, not only here in Oceanside, but in the Henshaw Basin, basically, and the San Luis Rey Valley. So tremendous amount of water all at once. Fortunately, we didn't have any flooding events, but it did break through at the harbor. And we ended up with a lot of debris that traveled onto the beaches, et cetera. So emergency proclamation. This is the first time since the 1990s, we've had concurrent emergencies running. And that was flooding events where we got hit twice in the same month by floods. So we've had a local emergency in effect for the coronavirus. A local emergency was proclaimed by the city manager on the 10th of April. And neither the county nor any other cities within the county have proclaimed a local emergency because this was a very localized kind of event. It was pretty much Del Mar to about midway through Camp Pendleton, let's say Las Palgas. The rainfall that occurred in San Clemente was in the hundreds of an inch versus in the multiple inches. So you can see that this was basically a stream of water that was aimed at the North County. The city proclaimed a local emergency because we did have significant damage. And we both have water, we have water utilities and Public Works here to speak to the damage that occurred to their individual facilities. The reason I bring up that neither the county nor the city has proclaimed a local emergency is because it does make things a little bit more interesting for us as a city. But we do have a strategy for hopefully getting federal or state financial aid. I do not anticipate that we will get any federal, but we will be able to get reimbursement assistance hopefully from the governor. If we can't get it from the governor, then we're going to work towards a director's concurrence, which we did in 1991. In 91, we had significant rainfall and we had damage to the Douglas Bridge. We were one of the few cities with significant infrastructure damage, it was about a million-dollar repair. And we were able to get the director to concur that we had significant damage. The downside is, is we don't get any emergency work covered, we just get permanent work. But that's our fallback. So we're hoping to be able to get through this emergency proclamation, get the emergency work and the emergency contracting taken care of, and then move towards trying to get reimbursement for the city. We believe that we've got sufficient damage to warrant a director's concurrence, especially given the economic impact that the COVID virus is taking on the city's finances. And so that's what we're going to be working towards. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our Water Utilities Director, but we'll be available if there's any additional comments or questions at the end of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today about what we experienced last Friday, it was pretty significant. As Chief Lawrence mentioned, when we have that amount of significant rainfall occurring in such a short amount of time, it typically manifests itself in drainage through our waterways and especially additional infiltration of rainwater into the gravity sewer system. The photo that I'm showing you here appears to be a river, but it's actually the 76 freeway or 78 freeway at the El Camino Overpass. It's looking south to the shops in Carlsbad. And I'm going to be talking about a couple of different infrastructure issues that we have had in this area specifically related to the flooding here. And before I go on to those descriptions of those impacts, I did want to also mention that in addition to these sewer issues, we did have water crews that were very busy on Friday, supporting the Public Works staff in responding to some of the landslide issues that you'll hear Kyle talk about. So the silver lining in this emergency is that we actually did well with some of our projects. One of them being the emergency work to protect the manhole at Haymar Drive. City Council had declared an emergency for repair work on February 26th. That manhole is adjacent to the eastbound lane in the 78 freeway, just to the east of the El Camino Overpass. This is a picture of that site. And here you can see, if I can, if you want to look at the screen, there's a dark image here. That's sheet pile shoring that was put in place to divert flow away from the manhole so we didn't have further erosion. The contractor had also worked through a previous storm a few weeks prior and was successful in protecting the manhole. The picture on the left is a close-up of the sheet pile shoring, which helped to divert the stream flows away from the manhole. And on the right are additional boulders that were put in place to protect the manhole. So from this perspective, we did very well, we did not have any sort of ruptured pipes or ruptured manholes. However, we did experience overflows and infrastructure damage at three other sites in the city. The first one being the Buena Vista Lift Station, which is located just west of that flooded picture I showed you on the 78. The Buena Vista Lift Station is located south of the 78 freeway in the parking area of the mall. This is aerial view of the site here, it's a little over two acres. And it has an abandoned treatment facility on site, as well as two separate lift stations, an old lift station and a new lift station. And this is a video that our crews took of the berm that butts up against the Buena Vista Creek. And to the left, you'll see that the berm was breached, floodwaters were spilling into the site. And everything was underwater, pumps, motors, electrical, switchgear. This is another aerial photo taken later in the day on Friday when we had an opportunity to actually get a drone up when the rain stopped for a little bit, I think it was about 6:30 PM. You'll see the site is totally underwater. Again, it's adjacent to the Buena Vista Creek, just on the top part of the photograph. This picture shows one of our, three of our five motors that have been a total loss at the station. This was taken on Saturday after some drainage had occurred. We also, excuse me, we also lost two blowers and blower fans, three drive shafts and bearings, three check valves will have to be rebuilt. The damage to the electrical equipment, as you can imagine, is significant, it really does not like to be wet. We've lost five soft starters, bypass contactors, motor savers, breakers, electronics and SCADA hardware. This picture was taken Saturday after significant drainage had occurred. So in total, our preliminary estimate of damages at this site to restore facilities is approximately $500,000. Up until the time that the site was flooded, the station was working and pumping sewage for treatment up to our San Luis Rey plant. When it was flooded and pumps were no longer able to convey the sewage for treatment, we did spill approximately 1.2 million gallons into the creek. As with the next projects that I'll talk about, we have been in contact with the regulatory agency to give them a preliminary heads-up about the issues that we had experienced on Friday. In addition, we also had significant drainage that came in through the gravity sewer system leading into the Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station, which is located on Oceanside Boulevard and I-5, just to the west. This is a picture of Vine Street where we had water coming up through manholes. This is one of several areas where we had waters coming up into the street. And in total, the amount spilled was 38,000 gallons. Additionally, our main wastewater treatment facility, the San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility off of North River Road, also experienced difficulties. This is a picture of our SCADA flow trends in brown, the squiggly line that you see going up and down. That is the raw influent or the amount of raw sewage that was coming into the plant in brown. The blue trend shows the flow that was going through the plant. And as you could deduce from this trend, we were unable to keep up with the amount of the flow that was coming in. Operators took proactive measures to contact upstream dischargers to reduce the discharge, to help with what was coming into the plants, to reduce that. They also changed some of the flows within the plant to try to hold the sewage in what we call the LATs or the Load Equalization Tanks. These tanks are intended to hold larger flows for treatment later when the plant is able to hydraulically treat the flows. Those also were overrun, that trend is in red. And you can see in the top part of that graph, it shows the duration of the spill. So we were able to contain some of the spill within the plant in the LATs and also in some other infrastructure, but we did have outflow from the LATs that occurred into the creek. Just to put this into perspective, as Chief Lawrence mentioned, the creeks and waterways were very much overwhelmed with the amount of flow that came in, in the short duration of time. Typical days when we don't have rainfall, the amount of sewage that's treated in the plant is about 8 million gallons per day. And we have the capability to treat 13 million gallons per day. At the peak flow time, we were receiving upwards of 25 million gallons coming into the plant. As a result of the LATs overflowing, we had substantial erosion around those tanks, as well as sinkholes. Some exposed pipe. And we also lost raw sludge pumps and motors, three portable sump pumps were also burned up. And we believe that the preliminary estimate of damage is approximately $50,000. We'll be doing a lot of this work in-house to restore some of the sinkholes. In total, 630,000 gallons were spilled from the San Luis Rey Plant. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Kyle Coger, Public Works Director. I'm going to walk you through some of the highlights of what Public Works got to experience last week and then show you some photos of some of the damage that we witnessed. So some of the highlights, we had to close several streets, Industry Street, Coast Highway at Buena Vista Creek, Skylark Drive and some sections of Oceanside Boulevard. We responded to numerous flooding calls along with police, fire and water. We responded to approximately 15 minor landslides. We had a sinkhole at Minnesota Avenue at Coast Highway. We had a few fallen trees, I believe they had private trees that had fallen that we don't respond to, but we just had a few in our city right-of-ways. And then because of the rains, now we have a lot of streets full of potholes on several of our arterials, as well as residential streets. So just showing you some photos of some of the things we saw on Friday. Obviously, the storms started on Monday, it was pretty quiet until Friday morning. We thought we were kind of out of the woods, but then we got more rain on Friday, obviously, than we thought. This was Garrison Road flooding from Garrison Creek. Highway 78 that you've seen on previous slides. Vista Way, and this is Buena Vista Creek actually flowing back onto Vista Way. Here's Cavalier Mobile Home Park near the Sprinter tracks. The Sprinter tracks at El Camino Real. Loma Alta Creek. Industry Street, we talked to several businesses along Industry Street and several of them did have flooding. I know of at least 10 businesses that got water, I don't know the full count, though. Coast Highway at the city border with Carlsbad. This is Oceanside Boulevard, we actually had to close a lane of traffic for a while because the water was flowing in the outer lane. Skylark Drive just south of Oceanside Boulevard. North River Road. Again, of Coast Highway. And we, like I said, we dealt with about 15 minor landslides. I call them minor because basically the ground gets saturated and you have vegetation that's sitting on top of the soil and it just kind of sloughs off. So these aren't, those aren't major landslides, they're minor, but they do cause a good bit of cleanup needed. Here's a few more on several streets. Like I said, we have had a few fallen trees as well. And this is some of the damage that was left behind after the rains, which will take us several months to get repaired. And here's a picture of the San Luis Rey River, it crested on Saturday, this photo was taken on Friday. But it did crest at 16 feet on Saturday and it's, which was still well below the flood stage. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution ratifying a proclamation of a local emergency by the Director of Emergency Services due to significant rainfall commencing on April 6, 2020, and flooding throughout the city. That's the end of our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, I did have some questions. Ms. Dale, you indicated regarding the Buena Vista, the damage to the Buena Vista Lift Station, you indicated about $500,000, but then when you, you didn't put a number on the other damage. And I was wondering, we're talking about sewage spills, so the appropriate agencies have been contacted and we're going through that process as well. But how much would you say is the estimated damage?
Councilmember Sanchez, honorable councilmembers. The Buena Vista physical damage is about half a million dollars. Physical damage at the San Luis Rey Plant is about $50,000 in damage. In terms of environmental mitigation or other penalties that might be associated with these types of spills, that's yet to be determined. There is some guidance that is, that drives those decisions with the Regional Board and will probably know in about a year to, a year and a half, that's typically the timeline.
How long do you think it'll take to get the work completed?
I think the San Luis Rey Plant is much easier to get done within a couple of weeks. The Buena Vista Lift Station, I think, could be two to three months at least.
Thank you. And another question with respect to flood insurance, I know we're self-insure, do we have anything that would be covering this?
Councilmember Sanchez, Mayor and councilmembers, to my knowledge, we don't have any insurance that would cover damages that we've experienced.
We are consulting with the risk manager, though, who's reviewing some of those policies to see if there's anything possible, but I'm not optimistic.
Okay, and another question, I did notice that the county had posted a request to receive information about damage because of the rains. It sounded like from individuals and businesses. Have you been in conversations with the county regarding the damage here in Oceanside?
Councilmember Sanchez, Mayor and councilmembers, yes. Our fire emergency staff have been in contact with the county EOC. I've also spoken with city manager in another city and they've primarily had private property damage in some of our neighboring cities. But the Fire Department can advise us what we're hearing from the emergency operations and our countywide.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. The damage throughout the city, we're still tabulating. Our expectation is we're going to have that information on Friday for the complete picture. Public Works and Water Utilities are getting us the information. Countywide, when we've spoken to the county, the county did not have, in their jurisdictions, a lot of damage to their infrastructure. Again, it was a narrowly focused, so most of their damage was up in the Fallbrook-Bonzell area. With regards to other cities, again, as our city manager identified, most of them have private sector damage, which is completely separate and is not counted as part of the proclamation of local emergency. Hence, the reason why I think other cities and the county have not proclaimed.
Right, thank you. And as to the tracks, you showed a picture of the tracks for the, was it the Sprinter? Yeah. So will NCTD be looking at that? Was there any damage or was it quick enough to?
I haven't heard of any damage, they usually hold up pretty well, but they'll have to take care of their own damage if they did have some.
Thank you, well, this certainly wasn't something that I thought we would be getting on top of our current emergency. So I think staff did a good job in responding. I know there were a lot of postings, pictures, same pictures that you had were all over social media. And there's no loss of life, that was, that would be the most important thing. So, but yes, I would, I will go ahead and move adoption of the resolution for emergency, state of emergency for Oceanside. And I encourage you to seek funding wherever we can, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I have about five or six questions, whoever would be best equipped to answer them. Number one, at what height of the San Luis Rey would it, at what height does it need to achieve before it's considered an actual city flood?
So it crested at 16 feet on Saturday. Obviously, it takes a little while for all the runoff from upstream to flow down the river. The flood stage is considered 21 feet, so we were still five feet below the top of the river. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but we, it could actually handle a good bit more capacity before we'd get to that.
Okay, so we were, we were below the low flood marker by about five feet, is that correct?
Correct, but like I said, that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's actually, it's a very wide river. There's a lot of capacity that it could still handle before it got to the flood stage.
Got it. And the newer facility that was built on San Luis Rey, it was built in a way near a river to be able to accommodate, from my understanding, at least up to the flood point, is that correct?
What are you talking about specifically, sir?
Well, we suffered damages at a newer plant that follow new storm water drainage and, you know, schematics. And so I'm just, I'm surprised and trying to understand how And so I'm just, I'm surprised in trying to understand how this facility took damages when we didn't exceed the low flood level line. I'm trying to comprehend that.
I think you're referring to the station on Buena Vista Creek, which is actually a different.
The San Luis Rey?
The San Luis Rey is to the north. Buena Vista Creek is to the south. If you're referring to what Carrie was speaking about, that's actually a different waterway.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean.
Okay. Got it. So are they both around the same feet then? Or we're talking about San Luis Rey, correct?
Yeah, I was just talking about San Luis Rey. I'm not sure what the flood stage and all for the Buena Vista Creek is.
But the newer station, I'm talking about the newer station, is that the Buena Vista Creek? Where's the newer, the newer station that suffered 50 grand in damages?
Councilmember, that would be the San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility, and it wasn't damaged by high water rising up into the plant. It was the flow of water coming in through the plant. And I'm sure Carrie can elaborate a little.
Got it.
Correct. So in addition to the regular flow that comes in through the gravity pipeline sewer system, sewer pipelines are typically located in low-lying areas where there is drainage and there is, where there were flooding. You can get significant inflow into the manholes and into those pipelines that will overload the hydraulic capacity of the pipelines as well as the plant. That's what happened at the facility. So like we were getting overwhelmed at the Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station, all the lift stations in the city, I'm sure, were also experiencing that high hydraulic load and pumping that into the plant.
Okay. Got it. So do you, has there been any sort of investigation or transcript on the operators? You mentioned some comments in reference to the operators asking for slowing down flow, which leads me to believe that this potentially could have been prevented? Or is this something that cannot be prevented, and we're just going to have to deal with this if this comes up again in the future?
Something like this is an extraordinary event. I think what the operators did was, within the best of their capabilities to handle the situation at the time, the upstream dischargers specifically were Fallbrook, and they were discharging through the outfall. So that was impacting the outflow or the outgoing hydraulic capability of the plant, not the incoming. But it did help with the flow through the plant. So it's all interconnected. So they were trying to get more water out on the back end and also address the water that was coming in on the front end by trying to store it somewhere. That didn't unfortunately work. We just didn't have the capacity within the plant to store the water without damaging further equipment, which would have taken the plant out entirely.
So this could not have been prevented?
We don't believe so.
Got it. So since it could not have been prevented, and there's no human error, I want to piggyback on the insurance question. How would we not be able to have insurance that would cover an instance like this where human error is outside of the equation? Why do we not have insurance policies on our buildings?
You know, well, as I said, we'll be consulting with the risk manager to determine if there is any applicable policies, but typically flood damage is excluded from most policies.
So you didn't inquire with them before this emergency meeting?
Have not had a determination by the risk manager at this time.
Great. Have you made the request, John Mullen, to the risk manager?
Yes, I've communicated with the risk manager.
Okay. And do you know when they're going to be getting back to you on that?
No, but I'll let the council know.
I know in the past, we've had some violations and/or fines assessed and mitigation measures that needed to happen with the San Diego Water Authority. At this juncture, we now have three items in my mind. I just can't even comprehend the requirements they're going to put on us. Do you have any idea, based on the past experiences we've had, what those numbers are going to look like and what liability the City of Oceanside will have because of those fines?
As I mentioned in a previous comment, we, there is guidance document, a guidance document that the State Board uses in order to calculate what the maximum and a minimum fine may be in these circumstances. I have not gone through that and done any sort of sample calculations. I do know that as part of that determination, they do consider whether it was an act of God. And in this instance, with the Buena Vista Creek overflowing and impacting our station, which was perfectly operational, as well as the flow coming into the plant, we will be arguing to assess at the lowest possible level that they can, knowing these circumstances. So that's yet to be seen.
Okay. Since this is looking like outside the control of human error, is there anyone that we can hold responsible for any of these issues outside of the natural act of God of rain? Is there a responsible party upstream that maybe did not do their maintenance or inspections or mitigations that would have, you know, caused this, that we could pursue litigation on receiving some damages?
Well, we would have those discussions in closed session, councilmember. We wouldn't want to have those discussions out in public.
No, I'm not asking you to list names, John Mullen. I'm asking you, is that a possibility, and is that something your office is prepared to move forward on and look into?
It's something we're prepared to look into.
Okay. Carrie, Ms. Dale, what can we cut off of your budget to cover these damages, and then we can add back on if we are able to get reimbursed in the future, based on the staff presentation?
We're looking at doing something like that, and that's certainly something we could discuss at the budget workshop. I'm not prepared to discuss any of that today, but we can certainly look at that and discuss it and provide a recommendation, if that's the direction.
Got it. So it's looking like there's a lot of variables from my perspective, from the city attorney's office. A lot needs to be looked into and brought back before council, from the city manager's office, and from your office, that I look forward to seeing some real numbers. I know we've had issues in the past with fines. We can kind of collaborate to see what those damages are, but there's a lot of missing pieces here for, you know, myself and representing the city. I agree with the emergency declaration. That's why we're here today. But I just want to make it clear that there's a lot of missing pieces that I would like to have filled before major decisions. Otherwise, we're going to have to cut, you know, other projects that are not as important in the future. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. While Buena Vista has shut down the lift station, how is sewage moving?
We were able to divert the flows over to a manhole in the parking lot. It's called the Vista-Carlsbad Line. It's mostly owned by Vista. A portion of it's owned by Carlsbad. That flow goes over to the Encino Wastewater Authority for treatment. So fortunately, we were able to divert that flow while the repairs are being made, and they're able to accommodate us.
I read that in one of the briefings, so I wanted to make sure that people understand that we have connections to get some of this handled on the spot. How do you measure what you lost in sewage? So how do you know?
So for instance, on the Buena Vista Lift Station, we're able to, we know how much is pumping through that station on a daily basis and how much the pumps were running. So that's how we do an estimate on other flows that are going out through manholes. There are other calculations that can be used based on how fast it's coming out of the manholes and maybe the loss we'd see out of the station.
Okay. I would, I think that's critical because it's based on the numbers that you'd tell the agencies is probably going to be, have a bearing on the fine. The, I think I'm done with you, ma'am. Finished with you here. I would like to know from Chief Lawrence, what the, what major damage are you looking at for concurrence with the OES?
Councilmember Feller, Honorable Mayor, members of council. So we have put a request out on a sheet for specific information coming back from all the operating departments for expenditures as well as damage. Right now, we are trying to work towards a governor's proclamation of state of emergency for Oceanside, which would give us our emergency response costs, debris removal, the time spent on putting up barricades, for example, sandbagging, as well as the permanent work. The permanent work being the restoration of the roads that the Public Works Director talked about, and the restoration of the water treatment facilities that our Water Utilities Director spoke of. So it's two components of basically emergency work and permanent work. And so that information on a spreadsheet basically went out to the departments on Monday. And our goal is to have a preliminary damage assessment, or an initial damage estimate, as we call it now, available Friday or Monday to submit to the county. And again, the county then will be the conduit to submit to the state. We're requesting that governor's proclamation. If we don't get that, we will move towards the director's concurrence. It's a lower threshold, and it's more geared towards single jurisdictions.
That's sustainable more to the permanent?
That would repair the permanent damage.
Okay. And then for Kyle Leaf? So I drove almost all these roads, and I'm afraid that some of these potholes, I saw some of them filled, you know, with a little bit of something, but do we end up with claims for front-end damage or any of those kinds of things out of these potholes?
Yes, sir. They submit them to risk management, and then they evaluate them and determine what needs to be done.
So I think, you know, that is probably, of course, you've got a few things to do, but that is probably something we could do to help that end of it for sure. I, you know, I was around in '93, up to my chest in water down on, in the valley when they didn't have the levees. So thank God the levees have been built, although the flow in the river is, it was unbelievable. You could have dropped your canoe in up by Vista Way in '76 and gotten to the coast faster than you could on the road. It was really blowing through there. And I'm sure there's a lot of stuff out in the water and buried in the sand out deep in the water that was valuable to somebody at some point. But the flow, do we have to fill anything back in to stop the river from running?
No, sir. It's, we'll go look at the bridges as well. Caltrans will come and look at the bridges for scour at the foundations, just see how much material has been lost, but I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had. I just, I would say those potholes are pretty serious. Oh, I did have one other question. Don't we already have a project for Industry Street?
Engineering is working on an overlay project, and I believe it will include Industry Street. We gave them a list of other streets on Monday that have kind of opened up some more potholes that we'd like to see done, so they'll just have to weigh the priorities.
Yeah, the railroad was pretty cleaned up right away, but there is some blame there as far as, again, I'd probably err on the side of driving a bulldozer down there and clearing the Loma Alta ditch, but I don't think I'm going to get that passed anytime soon, so.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question. How quickly will we be informed if the state of emergency will be recognized by the state for potential funding versus a director's concurrence?
We will get the initial damage assessment, sorry, councilmember Sanchez, members of council. We will get the initial damage estimate in, and normally, within two weeks, we are notified as to whether the state wants to begin a preliminary damage assessment process. It's not required, but they sometimes will come and do that. And then it could be another two weeks beyond that period of time, so 30 days before we had a substantive answer. And at that point, we would then be in consultation with the county, working with the state OES on the concurrence instead of the proclamation.
Do we know if there was any other flood damage within the state during these?
Councilmember Sanchez, I'm not aware of significant damage throughout the state. Most of this storm was local to Southern California. Every jurisdiction had some degree of damage, but none of the others, based on my quick search, there were no other local emergency proclamations that I was aware of or could find readily in the Southern California region.
Thank you. And with respect to the sewage spills, I am aware that there is a very, very thorough process that includes a very, very thorough investigation of just not, not just the place, the city where the actual spill takes place, but upriver as well, upstream. And that, you know, we will, the questions that were being asked by Councilmember Rodriguez will in fact be included in that study, engineering studies. I know that the agencies are very, very thorough in their requests and questions, and I also know that with respect to any kind of fees or costs against cities for whatever damage that impacts the sewage spill, that, and I know that the staff's going to be working really hard to get it to the bottom of the, hopefully, they won't even charge us, right? But if they do, there's also, you can actually do up to half of that mitigation within your own city, spend those dollars within your own city. So there, I know that there are a lot of ways to ensure that whatever possible fees and fines that we get, we can actually keep it low and also keep it within Oceanside for, for example, fixing it. Is that correct, Ms. Dale?
Councilmember Sanchez, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, yes, that's correct. And in the past, when we have had spills and fines associated with them, we've worked with either Habitat or nonprofit agencies to partner for projects specific to Oceanside. We also have opportunities to reinvest in projects in the sewer utility instead of paying that money to the state. That's another option. And just to add on to Chief Lawrence's comment, there were actually 12 sewer spills in the county that we're aware of. I know there was a sinkhole in the city of Carlsbad caused by a line that the city of Vista operates. There were also, I know they were struggling on North River Road on the Rainbow Line, and they had a lot of sewage coming out of the manholes there as well. So there were a lot of other agencies, like agencies, that were struggling. I did have a conference call with a couple other treatment folks in the North County area. They were also manipulating their system like our operators were as well to try to keep the flows there in the plant.
And all these answers to say questions from Councilmember Rodriguez as to, you know, was there any other, did any other city or any other entity contribute towards this? Will know that in about a year?
Well, I do know that we owe the Regional Board a fairly detailed report within 45 days. We are working on that. We will certainly explore those things that have been brought up here today as part of the response.
Great. Thank you.
There was a motion. I'll second that motion. Please vote.
Motion approved. Five oh.
Mr. Navarro, do we have anybody on item two?
No.
No. Public on item number two.
Then we will adjourn to 3:30 on Wednesday, April 22.